We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, everybody is here. Additions to the agenda, I don't believe there is any?
There are none.
Okay. Approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Okay. A public, anybody here for public comment? Nope. Consent agenda, we have A, which is the minutes, and then B, personnel, which is three of them. Did you want to go through those, Matt?
Sure. Both Sheila and Amy are hires and they are for the PAWS program. Enrollment is continuing to go up for the PAWS program, so those are both to help out with that. And then Rhonda's retirement letter is also in the personnel items.
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Communication items. Superintendent?
I just have three items for you, and they're all good news. So the first one is, I'm not sure if I shared with everybody, but the CNA lift grant for $50,000 was approved by the Southwest Foundation, and so that is good to go. That's going to be the partnership with ACGC, Eden Valley Watkins, and Painesville. We will host that program. It'll be actually in one of the rooms right across from the high school office. So that is, is good to go. The next step with that program is, I actually have a visit from the Ridgewater instructor, who is going to come out, and the instructor's going to see the space and give me some direction as far as exactly where they would like power sources and stuff like that, how they would like, there's going to be five hospital beds donated by Centricare Painesville, and so she will help me figure out exactly how she would like that all laid out. So that's going to happen here shortly. Over MEA, we will do some work in the room, and I think right now the hope is that Centricare Painesville can get the equipment that they're donating over and in the space by roughly around November 15th or so is kind of what the hope is. All three schools are going to be getting the word out. That second semester will be our first cohort of students, and that class is going to meet three days a week, and it'll run most likely, and the fine details need to be worked out on the exact number of hours, but I believe right now it's tentatively scheduled for three days a week from 7:30 a.m. until 9:00 a.m. So it'll meet for an hour and a half in the morning, three days a week. So, that is, is good news. Youth internship grant is going to be submitted. There's a November deadline. There was a letter of intent. This is a grant that we're working on with New London Spicer and BBE. We have some business partners in town that are also interested in having some youth internship opportunities in their industry, and so the goal here is to hopefully be able to secure $100,000 between the three districts to be able to start a youth internship program. And we already submitted a letter of intent, and the next step is after the letter of intent, they will get the application out to those that have indicated interest, and we will, we'll move forward. I'm really excited about this because it sounds like all three districts are really moving down that career pathway direction, and regardless if we get the grant or not, I think there's going to be a partnership here that we're going to be able to leverage some resources in order to work together to increase offerings, and specifically on-the-job training type offerings for students. So, that's interesting. And then the last one, Safe Schools Grant, I just wanted to make sure the MDE had, I think it was close to $260 million worth of requests, there were $25 million allocated. We were not funded. I don't know that that was a huge surprise, but the school districts in the area, I believe the closest one to us that did get funded was holding for it, I know they got some dollars out of it. But I think the message was, was sent to the legislature when there was, you know, 10 times the amount of requests that they had available funding, so I do believe the legislature understands there's a need as far as the school safety grant was concerned, and hopefully there may be some funding that comes in the future, and we already have a lot of the work done in order to be able to continue to potentially receive that type of funding. So, those are the items that I have. Any questions for me?
I'd just like to make a comment. On the CNA and stuff, I think you did a really good job, you and the team of people, because that came together nicely and quickly. It isn't something like we have to wait five years to get something done. I, I take my hat off to everybody who worked on that project, and the groups, and the same with the internship. Getting these done is a really big thing. We're showing that we're, we're moving ahead on this stuff, and I, I want to compliment you, that's, you did a nice job here.
Well, and I'll be real frank with, with the whole board, the, the reason the CNA-type project can move ahead so quickly is because of a partner like Centricare. I mean, that, that really is what gives the fuel to get that stuff going. If we didn't have an active partner that is willing to, to work with us, it could be a very long road to try and pull off something like that on our own, so.
Well, I have a public thank you to Centricare also.
Absolutely, I think that's well deserved.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Community Ed Director? Matt, take out. Hey, Matt. Good evening.
Good evening. Just a few updates for you. The Maker Spaces are really coming along. A lot of the equipment has been ordered. Garrick's interns are putting together lots of storage, work benches, so they're really active. It's great to get them involved in that process. Garrick and I will be going to St. Cloud tomorrow to do a large purchase, too. So, yeah, it's really coming together. We're excited about how, there's a lot of buzz in both buildings about what the possibilities are. Just in our Arts Council meeting today, we talked about STEM and STEAM, you know, STEAM is with the arts involved in it, too, and just about what the possibilities are for set design and getting kids trying out sewing, and just one of our Arts Council members said, well, we need to put together curriculum for the elementary to make instruments, to have the kids make instruments in there, and then they could talk about notes, and so we're really looking at covering all those program areas, academic areas. If you haven't checked out the live streaming of our football games, I'd encourage you to do that if you can't make it to the game. The team is doing a great job. Eric Johnson, Lee Schlepper, and Duncan McNabb, they're really doing a great job. We even, they even scored an interview with the victorious coach at the end of the homecoming game, so. So it was, it's pretty neat. It's getting good feedback on there with people chatting and, and during the game. I think by the time that game was over, we had over 300 views, and we averaged 50-some people online watching the game, so, and looking at the crowd, it was, I thought everybody was at the game, because it was a big crowd. So the big game against Pierce on Friday. We've had over 5,000 visits already this fiscal year in the fitness center, so that's going well. PAWS continues to grow, as you've seen, you'll be seeing probably, well, we're adding more youth staff, which don't come to the board, but maybe even more staff. We're just, we're at 90 kids already for this school year, and it just, it keeps, keeps growing. And then Winter Brochure, we're planning, we'll wrap that up here beginning of November, and that'll be mailed out third week in November. So any ideas or things you want us to look into, just let us know. So, any questions for me?
What is your intention, though, for, you know, we got football now, is there any other talk about any other areas of the school that you might be able to do some live streaming?
Yeah, we put it out there. I really was hoping to get volleyball this fall, but I don't want to launch it without somebody behind the mic that knows the sport to explain, and we just didn't have anybody come forward this year that would felt comfortable doing that. We didn't think we were going to have football, because we had a couple students identified, and then a student really wanted to do it, and he got, I know, an adult community person, Lee Schlepper, so we'll already be asking Lee about, for basketball and any students, so anytime, we really want it to be student-led and directed, so, but we are open, we have the equipment, we have the bandwidth here. It'd be great to do away games, but so many things are out of your control there that, I know we've talked about if this could become a class, you know, where somebody could dedicate a lot of time, and students could call and line that stuff up. We just don't have the manpower to do that now, but ideally, it could be a huge, you know, if you could do all the home and away games, and students getting that experience, I just love that, you know, there's a lot of preparation that goes into, and I feel if you can talk on a microphone in front of a lot of people, you know, it just helps you for public speaking and preparation, and so it's really great life skills, and the rapport is really fun. We had a lot of that with baseball, too, and we did every home baseball game. You know, they even got better and better, and I'm seeing that with this crew, too. They're more comfortable, and it's a lot of fun to, to participate, but, so, the short answer is, yeah, any students that would want to do any of the sports, or speech, or I don't know how that would work, but, you know, anything that we could broadcast, there's no, no cost for us to do it.
I mean, I'm thinking even, like, even the arts, you know, for band and choir, and sometimes, you know, the shut-ins, I mean, they don't have, you know, means of getting here, whatever, so, I mean, there'd be all kinds of different avenues, I think, as we continue moving forward with everything, just kind of be thinking out of the box, like this was, you know, it was thinking out of the box, and, you know, trying to be creative and stuff like that, and I think we have potential other opportunities to get.
The more we can get students creating, instead of just consuming media, the better. And so when, when you guys start looking at schedules and the secondary and ideas of journalism or mass production, I mean, these are just, we barely scratched the surface. They could go out, sell ads, they could, I mean, they could fund, you know, and get that experience of doing social media things, and.
And I kind of, I kind of look at it no different than years ago when they used to have newspaper, student-run newspaper for schools.
The Bark? I miss the Bark.
But, I mean, you could do something with, like you do with the BNC TV, I mean, you could even expand on that, and other, I mean, all kinds of different things, so, which would really be.
And the more you get those students doing that and active, and get credit, or somehow be part of it, yeah.
What kind of issues do we have with going to an away game and broadcasting? Is it the video or school policies?
No, the issue would be is the, are they going to have a good solid Wi-Fi connection? And are you going to, because you, we know here, there's some lag time in that with it, but we know we have a pretty good infrastructure setup.
Right.
Where if you start building and saying, yeah, we're going to advertise, or we're going to, we're going to do this game, and then you, so many things are out of your, you might get there, well, for example, we did the baseball game at the MAC for the playoff game, and we had lined it up, they had assured us that we had Wi-Fi, and we got there, and my team, they wouldn't give them the password. And we had advertised, this, the game's going to be on, and we're putting it out on Facebook, and they, finally somebody at the concession stand would give them the password, but it was stressful for our kids. I mean, they're, and they didn't get to start the game until later in the first or second inning, and so there's things there, but if you had, I mean, those are all learning lessons, too, where they could call and that, but it's a lot of, it's a lot of groundwork to make sure something, a production happens outside of your, there's more, more issues to happen. But I think now more schools are having good Wi-Fi, probably in all their gymnasiums. We aren't the first school that's, I mean, there's a lot of do livestream, but not many of them have commentary, and if you've ever watched a game, just livestream, and that's why I didn't want to start, it's boring, you know, just, anybody can put up an iPad and, like, stream basketball, but it.
It's more fun to hear audio than it is to see just video.
Exactly. Yep, yep, yeah. And you can even, if the audio, if video isn't working that great, you can use it like audio, like a radio, which we don't have in Painesville, you know, local radio station, so, yeah.
Great, good, good job.
Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Activities Director, Dean of Students, Max Maher.
Just on that topic, if we don't do it as a school, somebody will do it as a business. Pierce, we play in volleyball and football on Thursday, and there's a gentleman that covers all their games called You Are Their Sports, and he just does it straight on podcasting, so it's not radio, it's not anything, and he sells, I mean, he's probably not going to come here in a Porsche or anything, so I don't know that he's independently wealthy doing it, but, I mean, he sells advertisements to the business, so when you talk about opportunities for our students, and, you know, there's your business class, there's all of that stuff that, that somebody that might not even be interested in getting behind the microphone or videoing the class per se can come up with a business plan and sell it, and that was some of the stuff that we were talking about at that workshop session with the school board about students being able to do things within the realm of activities to accomplish the educational purposes without maybe doing it in a traditional classroom. So, we've had a pretty competitive fall this fall for activities. Our volleyball team, I think, is like 16-4. Boys and girls cross-country had a second-place finish last week at a bold invite. Football won the homecoming game, so we're almost to the playoff time, which is crazy to think about, how fast it goes. Tomorrow, Matt and I are headed to administrative conference meeting for the CMC. One thing of notice, I believe there'll be a vote taken to accept Roylton into the CMC conference in replacement of Pierce pending the Roylton School Board's approval. They have not made a decision yet, and will do so the end of this month. On Monday, October 15th, I am headed with Dave Orline, the Elementary School Principal, to a training at St. Cloud Sterns County Office for Truancy to learn about that. It'll be new for me, but, so hopefully I learned something. One new change at the high school here is, we began, I think it was maybe two weeks ago, the second-choice breakfast, and kind of rearranged the advisor time to take place right after first period, and so students go down if they want to, and the a la carte is open in the kitchen for them to get a chance after the first period to get breakfast. I just got set up at the beginning of this week on a program called Securely, which is a, don't quote me on this, because I'm not 100% sure, but it's a filter system that Jonah has set up for our school, and so what happens is if a student sends in appropriate email or something like that, I actually get a notification of that, so thankfully, the issues that I've had to deal with so far have basically been kids being kids and screwing around, but it is awareness out there. I mean, like, I will get, and it will be tagged, and it will say potential bullying or potential danger for harm if, if they're talking about violence, whether to themselves or somebody else, so that's, I just got set up for it because I needed to access a student. If somebody gets put in in-school suspension, we pull their, we allow them to have their Chromebooks so they can continue to do their educational stuff, then we just pull a report and tell them ahead of time, we're going to check on what you're using your Chromebook for and what you're accessing on the internet. And so when Jonah went through, he said, oh, well, you can actually access this, and he gave me all of that stuff. So, it's been interesting. Hopefully I don't get 35 emails a day or anything like that, but at the same time, it's also something that I need to meet with Garrick about, so he can communicate to students so they know that what they're doing potentially can come to my desk. I had some, kind of some surprised looks when you had two friends that thought that they're just sending stuff back and forth on their own, and it wasn't, like, super inappropriate, but it was just stuff that I needed to make sure that I checked on, and it was kind of like, I just like students to know that that's there, and so I'm not trying to find out information about their emails, so. Does Amy have any questions for me?
No. Thank you.
Good job. Thanks, Max.
Buildings and ground supervisor, Donnie Mayer. So the roof's leaking anywhere? Give it a chance. It's a good chance. Right now, we've had it all week, so.
Yeah. Haven't seen many weeks.
Good.
I'll mention the playground, as long as Dave isn't here. We worked there Saturday along with the playground committee and volunteers, moved a lot of material in a short time. Still got a long way to go. Thursday, I guess Playground Company is coming out, they're going to bore us some holes, and hopefully cement some posts in for the new equipment. We have to rip out one swing set Wednesday already, but hopefully that'll all work. Matt mentioned Room 103 and 105, the asbestos removal will come next Wednesday through Friday, they're going to remove the asbestos. We've started, we've removed all the outlets out of the floor and different things to move equipment out of there. Other thing we got done is I did 40 lead tests, or water and lead, lead and water tests at each school. Did get the report back, but I haven't run through it very good yet. All in all, it looks fairly good, but there's a few problem spots we got to take care of. Other than that, the heat is on once in a while, we turn it off at noon. It's either too hot or too cold, so. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Donnie.
All right. Community report. Anybody have anything?
Cheryl, do you want to talk about?
Yep, I was at the joint powers meeting on September 26th, and it was pretty much the same thing as other years. Painesville will be getting $8,865 this year. From all of the districts that come in, that it goes to and areas, $200,000 comes in, each school gets $1,500 of that. Sterns County gets 10%, and then what's, whatever's left is allocated to the schools as needed.
A lot of money, right?
It's a lot of money, but we've been getting 8,000 plus each year, so it's, it's worth going to the meetings, and the Voting Board is the board that approves everything, just like this, this board, so. Kind of uneventful, but worth the trip.
And I'll just quick mention, I was at a staff development committee meeting on the 20th, just talking about the two awards that we will give out again at the Chamber Award Banquet, which is on January 19th. So nominations will be going to the staff here in November. And again, just talking opportunities for staff, and there's a new continuing ed requirement on cultural diversity, so looking into opportunities for staff to do that. That's about it.
Thank you.
Can I talk just a little bit about West Central Ed?
Sure.
So, so last night there was a West Central Ed Board meeting, and there's, it was a work session, and the work session really, the only topic that they were talking about was this, getting more, more forward progress on the location of West Central Ed. Currently, SOC Center is largely the physical host, all of the people are officed out of SOC Center schools, and SOC Center needs more space. They, the space right now that was remodeled for West Central Ed is, right now, not so much next year, but the following year, they're anticipating that they would need that space back. So, the hope right now, and, and the West Central Ed Board is really hoping that they can come up with a location where all of the programs and staff would be able to be under the same roof. And right now, that's posing a little bit of a problem, because there's not a convenient location that would be able to have the specified specifications and everything we want, it just isn't available. So the work session was really brainstorming ideas about kind of what maybe next steps would be, and what possible solutions need to be on the table. They talked about everything from having a member district, you know, remodel or add-on to an existing building. They talked about having the ed district own a building, and then the members would have to, there'd be some modifications to the joint powers agreement as far as how we would maintain and repair and all of that stuff. So, things are moving forward. I think realistically, where it's probably going to end up is the current building that houses the ALC in Melrose and has a large portion of Sterns County offices, I think most likely will be a natural step, and the first step will probably be transferring West Central Ed staff members and office them out of that building, and that could happen potentially for next year, freeing up some space with the idea of then maybe the following year moving beacon over, or, or something along those lines. So, there will be more news coming from West Central Ed. Most likely, I do think that, you know, they typically have a board meeting every other month. It does sound like they probably will continue the every-other-month board meeting with probably a work session on the off months. So, they will be meeting more regularly, and I think definitely, as we move into winter and into spring, there will probably be stuff coming that the board will have to take care of in order to help West Central Ed move along to a solution.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Does anybody else, any committee meetings that they've gone to? All right. We'll move down to old business, district goals. Anything with that, Matt?
Yeah, let's talk about these a little bit. So, I did update our, our goal sheet at that link. As you can see, a couple things with the implementing piece, the lift grant, the CNA program, I'm putting that over as implementation because we are moving forward full speed ahead with that, so that is, is over there. I also slid the Maker Space stuff over to implementation. We are in the process and hoping that we have a lot of this equipment for a November 21st in-service date to get teachers comfortable with, with the equipment that's going to be in there, with the idea that come January, we're going to have students using that, that space regularly. I did slide that potential building project over to reviewing. I think from now until December, we will be in that review mode with the idea of hopefully polishing something up that the board would have the ability to evaluate and act on in December as far as what the, the direction will be that the district is going to pursue. And then the only other thing that I did add is I did put the District Office Staffing, Business Management Services as something on as well. We're going to talk a lot about that this evening, and you'll see it again next meeting as well. So, that's kind of what's happening in relation to our, our district goals.
All right. Any comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Underneath A, Band and Choir Trip Update. Cheryl Bala.
I just wanted to give an update as to where we're at as far as the trip. It is coming up rather soon on November 20th through the 25th. We're leaving on Tuesday, November 20th, at 2:15 p.m. Wednesday is a workshop day. Thursday and Friday, the students are off, and we get back on Sunday, so all the students will be missing, and school is about an hour or two. So it's a nice trip to be able to get in without students missing more academics. So we'll leave on Tuesday and drive overnight, and then we get to New York on Wednesday. Some of the highlights that they'll get to see, we'll get to walk around Yankee Stadium, not inside, but outside, see the observation deck, Grand Central Station, the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, guided Radio City Music Hall tour, the Empire State Building, and we actually get to see that at night. I'm looking forward to that. I don't remember if I've been up there at night, last time's I've gone during the day. We go to the NBC Today Show, we walk through Central Park. The Band and Choir have a combined, combined performance this time. We, last time Band had to be outside on the ship, and the choir was in the cathedral, but they were able to work out a combined performance at the Trump Tower, so we'll be doing a 40-minute combined performance there. And it's inside, and then they service lunch afterwards, so it's a nice chance to be out of the weather and be able to perform. We'll walk down to St. Patrick's Cathedral on FAO Schwarz, and then we get to see the Broadway show Wicked. The students are really excited about that. So am I. And then on Saturday, we go to Chinatown in Little Italy, we walk across the Brooklyn Bridge, and then we actually get to see the 9/11 Memorial Museum this year. Last time, we just got to see the outside, but we actually get to go through the museum this time. So we have 94 students going and 18 adults, so we have three busloads this year, so we're looking forward to a great trip. And our final fundraiser's coming up, and you're invited, it's the Soup Sandwich and Song and Silent Auction on Sunday, November 11th. We have planned it for that Friday, and then that's the chance of, hopefully, we're keeping our fingers crossed for football to be playing that night, and then volleyball's doing so well, too, there's state stuff going on on Saturday, so we moved it to Sunday from noon to four in order to try to avoid all of those things, so.
Can I ask a question? So when you go to the Today Show, will you try to get on TV?
We try, we make signs.
Okay, great, great.
Yes, yes. We have been on in, in previous years, people have recorded and seen some Painesville kids, so.
Okay, that's the most important thing, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions?
Oh, I guess I have one. In the past years, there have been different times of the year where Band and Choir have gone places. This has now become almost a tradition, every other year it's Thanksgiving. This has now become almost a tradition. Every other year is Thanksgiving. Is there a reason why that has?
To avoid, that's the best time to try to avoid, well, helping with sports a little bit because they're not competing except for football this year. And then Disney, it's because that's when the candlelight is.
Right, that's what I assume with Disney.
Thanksgiving, we try to avoid missing as much, we try to miss as little school as possible. And that's when that biggest break is. And if we go any earlier, we really have a chance of hitting playoffs. We go any later, then we get into the basketball season, and then we've got a problem. We go into any of the spring with March and everything, that's when all our contests and a lot of the winter sports are finishing up, and so it just.
I just know, when I coached basketball, that was a real stress, having players missing that crucial time during the season.
It is, but it's better than missing games.
Well, we had a game on Tuesday, got back, and I couldn't play some of the players because they hadn't been there for three or four practices.
Well, we tried to do the very best job possible to try to miss things. At all, as much as we possibly can. And when it's over Thanksgiving, it's at least, it's a.
Because I brought up the question before of why we don't have a spring break here at times when all of these events like German club or whatever could be done in a spring break. At a time when maybe it was away from sports a little bit better.
I don't know if there's any window that's away from sports.
Yeah, it depends on when the spring break was. Spring sports start the second week of March.
Yeah, and I know there are a lot of schools that do a spring break, and they tend to do a spring break around Easter. Some years, that works. Some years, this year, for instance, it wouldn't because it's so late. So, I know that there are, there are schools that do that. You know, I think spring break is a good conversation to have when we talk calendar. And let's, let's get that as part of the conversation and visit about it. You know, I know that the districts I've been in previous, there was a lot of conversation about we can't have a spring break because we never have. And a couple of them have, did implement a spring break, and it was very well received. So, I think that's a very prudent conversation to have when we have time to talk about calendar and can look at it. You know, I graduated from Alexandria, and they had a spring break every other year because they corresponded their every other year spring break with when the marching band went somewhere. And so that's how they came up with having a spring break on every other year versus every year. So, I think there's lots of potential solutions. It's just a matter of, you know, we need to sit down and put some time and energy into talking about them and discussing what what we think is the best course of action moving forward.
I do, in the past, the band has gone in the summer. Now, I don't know if there's a problem with summer, but.
There was one year that the band went, and that was a, that was a summer trip. It was a, it was a marching band. It was a marching band, no. It was out to Massachusetts, out in New York, Massachusetts that they went. And it was marching band when they had marching band during the summer.
Is there a reason why summer wouldn't work?
I know that a lot of students have work and have other things.
And I can, I can talk just a little bit about my history with it. Now, I'm not talking about a summer trip in terms of a music trip because I don't have history with that. But I do have some history with other student trips that go on during the summer. And what the experience is, is you need to have a lot of kids interested. Because by the time it comes to being interested and actually committing to being gone for five days of their summer break, you lose a lot of kids that decide, you know, I would rather do this, or I would rather do that, or I would rather do this. And, and so there's a lot of things going on. Not to say, yes, obviously, if it's during the summer, they aren't missing school. They aren't missing activities. The flip side to it is, I don't know of too many high school athletics that aren't doing camps in the summer. And if you want to try and schedule a music trip for four or five days that doesn't hit a summer athletic camp, bless your heart. And that would be an interesting challenge as well. So, summer, it solves the school issue, but I don't think it necessarily solves that people are just all of a sudden have an open calendar and will sign up and follow through with committing to a summer trip.
And I think, you know, Thanksgiving, we do have Thanksgiving, usually, things aren't happening on Thanksgiving. It's hard for, I know I miss Thanksgiving with my family every other year in order to go on the trips. And then Saturday and Sunday, I know they have, sometimes they have football tournaments or, you know, basketball tournaments. And we are missing, with football being so awesome, you know, and going so well, then we do have that conflict with going to the state tournament. But otherwise, it seems to be a window that we haven't quite hit the basketball games. They have, we missed practice. I know they missed practice on Tuesday, and I know we got back one time the night before. But of best of all possible worlds, you know, we were just having a win.
Practice Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, and Monday.
So, we're back Monday. We're back Sunday. We're back Sunday.
But that's all gone in the past. Every other year, basketball hits.
Yep.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, and Monday. That's when we don't see kids.
So, the '96 kid, go on?
'94.
'94?
'94.
So, how many kids is that affecting really?
It affects girls' basketball a lot.
So, what those kids are on?
We have, we have a lot of girls that are in volleyball, basketball. Football players are a lot that aren't going on the choir trip and band trip because they're staying for football. So, we have lots of kids, being in a small district, you have kids that, it's wonderful because you have kids that are able to participate in so many different activities. That it really, it's an awesome thing that we get to have kids that are so multi-talented and be able to participate. It is a, a good thing and a bad thing. You know, in a large school, if kids would just be in music or just be in sports, you probably wouldn't have that as much.
So, that spring break conversation is for later, obviously. But, so, Matt, with these spring breaks, do you find that that works good for them? For something like this?
For something that school has the ability to schedule, yes. But I'm not going to sell you a bill of goods that says if we have a spring break, families are only going to travel on spring break. Families will travel when families can travel. So, it's not going to solve that question if people are thinking we're going to have a spring break so that we don't have kids missing school to go spend a week in Florida. That's not going to solve that issue. But what it would do is, could it give us, the school district, the ability to schedule something during spring break? Absolutely. But the other thing is, a spring break isn't necessarily perfect in terms of Minnesota State High School League activities either. Because then you run into the other question of, okay, so basketball has just started, we're going to have a spring break. And the next question becomes, does the coach make practice mandatory? And if the coach says it isn't mandatory, but then someone goes and they feel like it was mandatory, it can open up a whole another can of worms. There's nothing that's absolutely going to be perfect in the deal.
So, if we compare ourselves to other districts, obviously have similar things. Does it say really, we just do the best we can, like you're trying to do over, over Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Is that kind of what?
My personal, yeah.
But it may not solve anything.
It might not solve it. My personal opinion is, life is full of choices. And you all have to be able to evaluate your options and make the best choice that you have for you. That's what you need to do. And obviously, some people are going to make that choice and say, I'm not going to go on a trip because I'm involved in this activity. Another person might evaluate that same information and say, I don't know when I'm going to get a chance to go to New York and go to whatever it is in New York on Broadway. I'm going to take that as my trip. Both choices are perfectly acceptable. It's not us to say that everyone needs to make this choice. Let's give kids opportunities. They're going to take some and they're going to leave some. And I think that's okay. It's the way it's, it's going to have to work. But I would like to explore a spring break. I think that's a good conversation to have.
But I would caution you that if we're going to put that in the hands of the choir and band, to say that's when their trips are going to be, you're going to have a lot of people that have talked about, well, we should have a spring break because that's a time for family to do something, and now you're filling it up with a trip.
Now, you're really going to irritate people.
So, I mean, there you go. But again, so let's make the best choice. Let's make the best what, what works for the district.
And I think if we do a spring break, the same thing as you said with the sports, it will be hard for spring sports to say, well, we're not going to have any kind of practices all week during the spring break. They're probably going to still have practices, and if we go on a trip, they're still going to miss practices.
And the only, the only thing sometimes that you can hit with spring break is sometimes Minnesota spring is still winter. And so, when you're talking about sports that are supposed to be outside, there's only so much practice you can do inside for a golf team, for instance, before you're all practiced out. And, and so sometimes that spring, you can actually have, you know, we are going to have these days as a no-practice day. Again, is it a perfect solution? Absolutely not. It's, it's not. But I commend you for taking 94 kids to New York, so, thank you.
And it is fun. I've been there. It's been fun.
Okay, so number B, compliance. Assurance of Compliance.
Yep, so this is our opportunity to say that we will follow state and federal statutes and that all of the equal opportunity employment and educational laws will apply to Painesville area schools. We don't, it's what our practice is, and we have to approve it every year, so if you have questions, I'll try to answer.
I'll make a motion. We approve the assurance of compliance.
I'll second.
We got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. C, Policies First Reading.
There are four policies that are up from our policy review cycle. Policy 102, 103, 206, and 214. The link that's, that is the hyperlink for Policy First Reading, that is just a summary document for you. I would call these all technical changes. Policy 102, Item A in the General Statement of Policy adds language as far as how they are defining gender and including gender identity and expression as part of the definition. Going to Policy 103, they're just simply substituting conducted for provided. And that's when they're talking about investigations. And they're adding the cross-reference for the bullying prohibition policy as well at the end of the policy. Policy 206, the only change is, they used to use the term citizen when they were talking about public participation at school board meetings. Now, they are crossing out citizens and referring them to people as persons. That is the change throughout. There are four places, five places throughout the policy that they make those changes. And then Policy 214, out-of-state travel by school board members. That policy has them actually removing the requirement that that policy is annually reviewed. For Painesville area schools, we would plan on continuing to review that on a three-year cycle. So, every third year, that policy would come up for review. Unless, of course, something would change and we would have to review it annually, then we would slide it over to the annual review list. So, those are the bridge version of the changes. The policies that are actually in that link, those are the full policies of what I will be recommending be approved. So, certainly, if you want to reread them a couple of times, that is the policy that, at the next meeting, I would recommend for a second reading and approval.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anybody have any questions on those so far? Okay, we'll move to D, MSHS.
We do need, I would like to have a motion on just approving that they did go through a first reading.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, so I got a motion from Lou and a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried.
And then these, these policies, as they're written, then will be posted in the district offices. If anybody would want to come and look at what the Board approved at first reading, they could come and check those out. At the next meeting, then, we would do a second reading and adoption, okay?
Alright, thanks, Matt. D, MSHSAL Grant A Application.
So, this is the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. You may have remembered, a few years ago, the legislature allowed the tax exemption status for state tournament and state tournament tickets to sunset. It was part of a budget disagreement, if you can believe that. And it was allowed to sunset. Well, they quickly heard that people thought it shouldn't have sunsetted, so now it is back in place. The, so basically, what we have is last year's tax collected from the state tournaments that the Minnesota State High School League runs. Rather than going to the state coffers, that goes to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. The foundation then turns around and offers grants out to its member schools. Grant A is an application that we can file for, and the resources that we would be awarded, they must go to us establishing a scholarship or hardship account in order to pay for fees associated with activities if students are in hardship cases. So, my recommendation would be is that we approve this, and we direct Max to go ahead and fill this out. The other thing is, it is a resolution. I'm not sure what the practice has been at this school district with resolutions, but I would prefer that anytime there's a resolution, we would have a roll call vote rather than just a, okay, regular vote. So, there is a resolution that needs to be approved, and then upon approval, Max can go ahead and get that grant application submitted on behalf of the school district.
Motion approved.
I have a motion from Cheryl and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Linda?
Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Alright, so it's been carried.
Thank you.
Okay, number E, Shared Business Manager Position.
So, there is a document that is at your place as well, associated with, with this agenda item.
Thank you.
So, we do have a retirement coming in the district office. And, and one of the things that we need to do is, we, we need to obviously start planning for how that transition is going to look. I do have, in that document that's in front of you, the way I see it, and I'm, I'm open to feedback after we're done here, if maybe there's other options. But I really see that the district has three potential options in front of it. The first one, obviously, would be that we would simply post and rehire to fill the vacancy that will occur once that retirement date arrives. That certainly is something that is feasible. It's very doable. Obviously, that person that would be hired would transition right into our existing structure and is, is very doable. The, the cost and potential costs, and again, I caution board members to really look too closely at that because there is, it is a range. And that range is anywhere from, you know, roughly $58,000 to $72,000, and that's total employment costs. And, and part of that range depends on what kind of candidate you get and qualifications and all of those things. So, that certainly could be a option one. Option two is, and I believe there has been some conversation, not a lot, but I think there's been some conversation in the district about potentially hiring a full-time business manager. That certainly would be an option. The district does right now subscribe to a couple of financial tools that are used in fiscal planning and budgeting. In my opinion, if a full-time business manager were brought on board, most likely those tools would not need to be subscribed to on an annual basis. Right now, we are investing about $9,000 annually for those financial tools. Again, you know, I'm estimating costs here, but I'm, I'm thinking that realistically, depending on exactly what we would post as criteria, I think you could probably secure a full-time business manager for somewhere in the neighborhood of about a $70,000 salary. That'd be a 12-month, 2,080-hour employee is, is what that would be. And again, that's an estimation. So, you're looking at the total cost there, anywhere from $88,000 to $97,000 potentially, depending on what exactly you would end up with qualifications and anything. And it could be slightly lower, it could be slightly higher. The third option is to potentially look at, at partnering and sharing a business manager. That is certainly something that has been a conversation here. We do have a school district in our area that is interested in partnering. And so that, that would certainly be an option. BBE is that school right now that is, is interested in potentially looking for a school district to do a shared. for a, a school district to do a shared, uh, business management role. Um, you know, Mark and Bruce both have, uh, been over and, and talked about this. One of the things that I get very concerned about when we talk about sharing is, what is your definition of sharing? Because if my definition of sharing is different than your definition of sharing, someone's gonna be a bad sharer. And that leads to conflict, and that leads to stuff that doesn't work. So, um, we did go and, and visit with BBE. Um, I can tell you, I think my opinion was, that our concept of what a shared business management, uh, uh, official would look like, I think is very similar. Um, and then, Mark or, or Bruce, I don't know if you guys have anything you want to add about that.
From my position, I, I have heard about a business manager in the district for a long time, and a lot of people are asking us for that, to try and get a grip on this. But we start looking at that salary, and I'm, I mean, it can get to where we can't truly afford it. But at the same time, when we start splitting them up, and in our conversation with, uh, BBE, um, they're in the same position. So if you look at what the business manager may do, we have a lot of coordination to make sure this all works. Taking one person to be able to do, uh, say they have a report for us, do you suppose it's gonna take much to do the report for the other one, other than to change the numbers? Reports for a lot of that stuff is gonna be almost identical. So, it makes sense that we look at trying to achieve it and saving funds at the same time. Um, I'd haven't seen your comparison. You told me that you would do the three options. It all sounded really good to me. But we have a lot of things we have to iron out. We've got a little bit of time here to figure it out, which I like. I like to plan. I don't like to rush into something. And, um, I just think that, um, I thought it's something we should look at. Save the district some money. We should get very similar to the same thing, and accomplish what lots of people are always asking about. Always looking for that business manager.
I think the other, the other thing that is important as well is, you know, the school districts as a whole have been through some financial difficulties, and, and Painesville's no exception. And I think, um, whenever we have any sort of attrition, one of the things that we need to be very prudent about is really evaluating, how do we move forward and provide the most efficient service that we can? And so, um, I, I think there's, I think it really needs to have serious consideration. Um, you know, we talk about, um, potentially having employees go from full-time to half-time because of budget reductions or because of budget situations. So I, I think we need to be prudent about, how could we maybe change our delivery model to potentially gain some efficiencies? Um, obviously, what's being talked about now is just the, uh, the business management side. Um, if you kinda flip the page on your document, you can kinda see what that might look like as far as roles. But I think this also is a possibility to really talk about changing the paradigm of how we're gonna run the business of a school, and try to get efficiencies through scale. You know, I, I do believe that there could be a very easy way that this could lead to one person doing payroll for both districts. You know, I'm not saying that we're gonna get checks from BBE, that's not what, what's being suggested. But I think it would be very simple for somebody to be able to do payroll, um, that would be doing payroll in multiple districts. I, I, I think that's something that could be very easily accomplished. So I, I think that the option, the idea, needs some, some pretty serious consideration. Um, yes, there is obviously some financial savings to it. Um, I also think the other thing is, it would be important to create a agreement that is sustainable. So that long after this board is gone, and long after this superintendent is gone, that there's a sustainable model that can last for fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and, and we can move forward, um, like that. So, tonight, this is just simply information for you. There's no action. Um, we will talk about this again at the next meeting. Um, I do believe that in November, you will, um, need to, to make a decision as we move forward, but, uh, it's just simply information. Expect this topic probably to come back at the next, um, board meeting as well with some action in November.
May I just have a question?
Yeah.
Excuse me if I missed something, but as a full, uh, option two opposed to option three, full-time versus half-time. Someone comes up to me and says, "Well, if we need a full-time person, how do we get by on a half-time person?" Or, "If we all need a half-time person, why would we hire a full-time person?"
And I, I think those are all valid questions. I really do. Um, I think I'm very comfortable that I do believe we can operate with a two-and-a-half FTE in our district office. I, I think that's very doable. And so, yes, I would agree. I, I think we need to question, why would we hire, uh, have three full-time people then? Um, that being said, I think we would have, a lot of things need to happen in order for us to ever move any less than two-and-a-half, um, but I do think we could absolutely do business as we need to with two-and-a-half FTEs.
Myself, I was counting on some of, uh, some duplication. Like I said, I, I don't know exactly what it is, but if you have a report that's due, does that take a day on us and a day on them? I kinda think you're gonna blend those together. So even though it's two-and-a-half days, I suspect we will get a little more than that, and they will get a little more than that. And the last thing I looked at, the more I thought about it after our meeting, is, I think Cold Spring's running close to two thousand students over there, somewhere in that neighborhood? And, um, I think they have one business manager, is my understanding. So take the population of their students and the population of ours, I just don't see how we can't make this work, as compared to two smaller districts hiring and spending all that extra money.
So again, no action tonight, it's just simply for your information. Um, obviously, if, uh, you go home tonight and have a question, email me. Give me a call, shoot me a text, let me know. Um, but, uh, we will probably touch base on this again at the next meeting, and then I would be looking for some direction at, uh, that first November meeting. So, any other questions?
Thanks, Matt. F, potential facilities project.
Okay, so, um, tomorrow evening, we are going to get the, uh, that larger, um, I'm gonna call it a community facility, uh, committee back together. Um, my understanding is, the last meeting that they had was in April, and, um, they had a, a meeting that started in the auditorium, and then they kinda broke into some tables and did some brainstorming and stuff. Um, so we are, are ready to, to get that group back together. And, um, things have, have changed slightly, I would consider them a slight change, from, from where things left off in April. And I think there's a, a couple of, of reasons for the, the change, and first and foremost, I really think that the important thing that we need to be able to do is really analyze and look at how we're currently using our high school space. I think that really needs to be a, a component of the conversation. Um, obviously, the diagram that you have in your board packet is the piece that focuses on the career and tech side of the house, and the, um, community center, field house, whatever you wanna reference it as. But there's also this current place we're sitting in right now, that, um, in my opinion, is a very underutilized portion of our school building, and it's literally the prime real estate right in the center of all the action. So this space, in fact, this entire square, is also something that we need to, to talk about as well. The other thing that I think is important is, um, we need to, to also be able to really focus and, and maybe start the conversation back at the beginning about kind of why we're, we're talking about a facility project. And I think, I just wanna make sure that that conversation is, is at least had one, because I wasn't around when the previous conversation happened. And so I think that that's an important place to start, just to make sure that everybody is on the same page. The other piece, as you look at that configuration, one of the things that, um, I think is important is that we use our current square footage to its optimal ability. And so there's a, a large chunk, anything that's in green or a shade of green, that is the CTE component of this. And as you look at it, there would be two areas of CTE that would be additions. The one would be the auto shop, and the other one would just be, we're just calling it a CTE addition. Kind of the brainstorming we've done is, you know, there are schools now that are building tiny houses. Um, this would have a high roof, it would have an overhead door, it would be a space that you literally could construct a tiny house twelve months out of the year. You wouldn't have to worry about working outside in February or January. Um, so, the new construction associated with the CTE, it comes out at about six thousand square feet. I'm aware that that is, uh, less than, than what was previously on that, that map or that plan. But the new construction right now, associated with the CTE, is all components that would require higher ceilings. So obviously, if you're gonna have an auto shop and have a hoist in there, you need the higher, um, roof line in order to accommodate that. And it seems to make sense, given our existence, our existing structure, that those high roof lines actually somehow are butted up to our current fitness center. And you'll see on the map, that's where our current fab lab, or the proposed fab lab would be. And the reason why it would be important to butt up the higher roof lines to the existing fitness center is based on how the fitness center was constructed. Obviously, that's before my time, but my understanding is, when that was designed, there was conversation and intent to actually have space for a wrestling room above the current fitness center. And because of that, that roof is already constructed to the specs that it would need to be able to support the snow load that, a company being butted up to a higher roof line. And so that's why the, the architect is suggesting that we put any new construction that has the higher roof line, wherever we would join it to the existing building, try and join it at the fitness center, because that roof is already structurally ready to support that, that additional snow load. And the rest of this, obviously, if we're gonna, um, have a fab lab and remodeled CTE space, uh, one of the things that needs to be accounted for is the fitness center. Um, the fitness center is, is obviously very successful, and one of the things that comes with success is, you sometimes have limited space. So our fitness center is not only in our fitness center, but it's also in our hallway, it's also in an entryway, and it's also, I think, reclaimed some auditorium storage. And when you add all of that stuff up, you come to about a five thousand square foot fitness center, is what we're currently operating. It's just that our fitness center space is only twenty-six hundred square feet, and so it's kind of expanded in order to meet demand, is really what's going on. So that would be, uh, put on, um, to the north as well, on the other side of the auditorium, that's where that, uh, fitness center would be added in. Um, and then you would have your, your wrestling room and your, your courts and, and community center, field house. The lobby is big, and it's big for a reason. It's going to, um, actually provide some form of a overflow intermission, um, space when our auditorium is being used and it's full. Um, people can actually get out, stretch their legs, and have a place to go stand and converse, and it would be able to provide an opportunity for concessions and, um, refreshments and all of those things, that right now, we really don't have a space. Um, you know, we can put tables up and do things like that, but there isn't a, a dedicated, um, space. So, this is, is really kind of the, the easy summary of, of what the, the conversation tomorrow evening is going to be. And, um, just so the board is aware, I did send out, um, roughly, I believe it was about seventy-one emails. Um, anybody who participated in a previous, uh, um, facility, um, meeting and left their email, I did send an email to them inviting them to tomorrow evening's, um, larger facility group. Um, and then there was one meeting that actually had everybody who was invited to that original one. I had that, uh, email distribution list, so I included those people as well. So, um, the plan moving forward, I think tomorrow night, we need to kind of, uh, take a little step back and talk about, um, kinda the, the root of why we're, we're here and, and why we're, we're talking about this, and then, um, can go over kinda what, um, things are, are looking like and what this latest addition is. I think we also have to talk about the plans at the high school. Um, uh, you know, it's a, it's great to do this CTE remodel, but if you're just gonna keep offering the same stuff, I, I, I don't know how we, how we can do that. So we need to talk about where, um, we're going with career pathways and what that's gonna look like, and how we can, um, progress forward, and, and really how we're gonna actually take this space and put it into a live product that people can start to kinda get their head around. I would anticipate another, a second October meeting, and most likely, one November meeting for sure, with the potential for having two. And I'm hoping then, um, after, as we get to the end of November, then we would have something that is ready for the board to do some final work with, and, um, obviously decide what the, the final course of action would be with the facility. Questions at all about, uh, anything that I've either said or is in front of you?
Uh, one question for Matt, was, it says office here, I think. Uh, is that, are we still thinking of moving community ed office down there then?
Correct.
And you've got enough room there for that?
Um, we, yeah, our original plan, the square footage that we had, we just tossed there.
Okay.
And there is still discussion on where we'd be and how.
It's awful tiny on this map.
Yeah.
I'm sorry that you could get yourself in there.
[laughing]
Uh, I can expand it, though, I can.
Are there any of these maps, um, that might have measurements on them? Or is this not to scale at all?
Um, this is to scale, but at, as far as, um...
Like that, it says that, um, well, I just glance at it, and I look at, uh, the wrestling room and storage and storage, kinda a topic for tomorrow night, but maybe that's together. It'd be interesting to see what, what those measurements are.
Which one? The twelve hundred square foot, or the...
Well, somewhere in his, in this plan, it should be just one that says, you just hit a button, and all of a sudden tells you that there's fifty feet here and seventy-five feet there.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know that we're to that point yet, Bruce.
Oh, okay, so we, this is more conceptual, it may not be to scale.
Right. So, well, I, I can tell you that, that wrestling room at thirty-seven hundred square feet, there will be a wrestling room that would be thirty-seven hundred square feet, and that is directly, uh, a causation of putting two full-size wrestling mats down covers thirty-seven hundred square feet. Um, along with the fitness center. I can assure you that the fitness center will be five thousand square feet when it would be done, but as far as actually getting down to that, um, yes, that level of detail, I don't think this drawing is, is gonna suffice. We will get there. Um, the other thing that is a big question with this, too, is, um, you know, Evan has some work to do as far as, uh, these hallway, um, requirements. And as far as, uh, building capacity and number of exits, and how wide the hallways have to be before considered dead-end hallways and all of that stuff. So, yeah, there's more of the, the detail that, that will have to come out. I don't think we're, we're to that point yet, and I don't think tomorrow night, that will be where exactly we, we end up either. Any other questions? So tomorrow evening, we will have a, um, a work session. So it will be a, a board meeting, there will be a work session. Um, we will facilitate that in such a way that you guys will, um, be seated at a board table and, um, be able to partake in, in the conversation and stuff, but it will be a, a, um, full board work session. Okay? Okay? All right. Any other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Is it that time?
Okay, I got a motion for, uh...
Nice work, Lou.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried.